Blasting in the morning is a really great way to keep your teeth healthy and start the day. But when you're through, here's what you do. Throw it in the trash, don't flush it. There's a problem lots of people don't know called sanitary sewer overflow. A condition buried deep in the ground, inside a pipe where bed clogs are found. It's a problem we can all help solve. So throw it in the trash, don't flush it. Baby wipe fender just cotton pads, paper towels, dental floss, clog up bad. Medicines, kitty litter, cotton swabs, hair. Throw them in the trash, don't flush it. It just takes a second to do the right thing. So toss it and let's keep our pipes clean. Throw it in the trash, don't flush it. If it's not toilet paper, don't flush it. Even if it says you can, don't flush it. If you're having any doubts, don't flush it. One more time, don't flush it.
According to the National Geographic, ocean plastic is estimated to kill millions of marine animals and seabirds every year. And scientists predict that by 2050, plastic will outweigh the number of fish in the entire ocean. Plastics often break down into smaller and smaller particles called microplastics, which can be ingested by both animals and people and remain in our environment for hundreds of years or longer. Here are a few helpful tips on how you can help stop the tide on plastic pollution. Tip one, bring reusable bags when grocery shopping. Tip two, avoid using plastic straws or use reusable straws when having a drink. Tip three, drink from a reusable water bottle instead of buying individual bottles. Tip four, tell your friends and family about the effects of single-use plastics. You can help reduce the amount of single-use plastics by spreading the word and going green. For more information and to take the pledge, visit reducereusetampabay.org.
Good afternoon and welcome to the August 10th, 2023 Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Amendment Workshop. Before I pass things over to Planning Commission to introduce today's item, will the clerk give a roll call to establish attendance?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hagan?
Here.
Cameron Sepeda? Commissioner Cameron Sepeda? Cullen?
Here.
Commissioner Count?
Yes.
All right, Myers?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Bostel?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Planning Commission, you want to introduce the today's item?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission. Today, we're going to have a presentation overviewing the update of the future land use section of the Comprehensive Plan. I will go ahead and share my screen. Hopefully, everyone's able to see that presentation.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, thank you. So we will be walking through some of what we've been hearing from the community and our community outreach, and then the policy proposals that we have. I will be joined in the presentation with Melissa, by Melissa Leinhardt, but we have a team of staff who've been working on different components of this. And they're all online so that if you have questions or feedback in terms of direction, we really want to get that from you at today's workshop. So we'll dive right in. We're going to cover some refreshers on why we're doing this and what our growth projections look like. Then, as I mentioned, cover what we've heard so far from the community and then talk about the strategies that we are proposing to add into the Comprehensive Plan related to inward growth inside the urban service area and outward growth, looking at approaches to strategically expanding the urban service area. So the Comprehensive Plan, as you are all familiar with, is legally required by state statute to cover a number of topics. As you can see on the screen, we've broken the different components of the Comprehensive Plan down into community and built environment, natural open space, one water, and governance. And most of those sections have already been updated in the past couple of years. But we are focused today on the future land use section. The Comprehensive Plan is intended to have... I twice, seems to have stopped moving them forward. Oh, is it advancing the slides for you all? No.
I think so.
Looks like it was adding puzzle pieces.
Oh, okay, thank you. I missed the changes there. Okay, great. So the Comprehensive Plan under state statute is required to look out a horizon year of 10 years and 20 years. And so we are looking at extending the horizon of the Comprehensive Plan from 2025 to 2045. And in that time period, Hillsborough County is anticipated to grow by another 350,000 more people and approximately 107,000 more jobs. So that's a considerable amount of growth that we need to identify places for people to live, to work, the kind of county services that they're going to need, and then the transportation system that will get them to and from all of these places. And that's one of the primary objectives of the future land use element is to outline that vision that guides then decision-making on plan amendments, rezonings, capital improvements, programming, to help achieve that vision. So as you all are familiar with, one of the primary tools that directs growth within our community is the urban service area. This has been adopted in the Comprehensive Plan since the early 90s and has been a strategy to identify the areas where the county will provide urban levels of services. And corresponding with that, there would be suburban and urban levels of density. So everything within the red is within the urban service area. It does not incorporate the three cities. And then outside the urban service area, the policy direction in the plan is that the area would maintain a more rural development pattern. You'd have a lot more development on wells and septic tanks, for example, so it wouldn't have those urban levels of infrastructure. So this strategy has served us well for the last 20 years in that it has allowed us to have choices in our community of urban and suburban places to live and also rural places to live. And as we move through what we've heard from the community, you'll see that that trend of wanting to see choices continues in what we've heard in our public meetings and surveys. But what we have seen in the data is that the land that is still available for development, either that's what we consider developable, so it's vacant and it's not a wetland or some other environmental feature on it, or is redevelopable, meaning that it shows some indicators that it might be, have a propensity to be redeveloped, is starting to dwindle. And let me move to the next slide, which gives the exact numbers. So within the urban service area, our estimate is that there's about 3,282 acres left of, for development and redevelopment. And then there's an additional 17,796 within the three cities. But when we move to the map and we look at this, and I know it's hard to see... And the reason it's hard to see is because most of the parcels that are showing up as developable or redevelopable are very small. They're isolated. They are often in the mix of existing established neighborhoods and communities. Many of the larger parcels that you see might be around Plant City in the area that it's annexing. We've got the Energy Industrial Park here, some mosaic lands, and other parcels in South Hillsborough County that are already entitled and have other, or have other constraints to them. So while they might be available for some type of development, it might not be development that actually accommodates population or employment growth. Or in the case of many of these larger subdivisions in Southern Hillsborough County, we're already anticipating that they are going to accommodate some of that population growth because we know how many homes are approved to be built there. So we are seeing that we are reaching a point where we need to start to look at how we use our land, not only in the urban service area, more efficiently, but also looking outside the urban service area. And how do we approach that? And how do we preserve a rural choice of lifestyle, but also perhaps allow for some expansion? Clustering the development so it doesn't spread out and consume all of the rural area? And that's largely what we asked a number of questions about in our public outreach. It was those two directions, growth inward in the urban service area and outward in expansion areas. So we did an online survey. This built upon a phone survey that we did in 2021. We did a statistically significant phone survey about just growth generally in unincorporated Hillsborough County. We followed that up with an online survey that asked about certain strategies that we wanted to kind of test to see whether or not the community felt they were relevant. We got about 1,800 survey participants and collected over 32,000 points of data. So we got a lot of information and I'll share some of those results with you. So we asked what was a priority for residents? They were given nine choices, and the top four overall were preserving natural areas, ensuring that infrastructure was keeping up with development, maintaining agriculture and rural lands, and having a variety of mobility choices. We next asked about strategies that related to inward growth. So inside the urban service area, what seemed to be the best policy approaches? And the most important one here was maximizing existing infrastructure. So you'll see as I go through all of these slides, the theme of making sure infrastructure is keeping up with development is definitely something we've heard all along. But in particular, within the urban service area, the idea of focusing new growth where there's existing infrastructure seemed to resonate with people. The least important was having a variety of housing types. And on this next slide, you can see all four of the strategies that we shared. Efficiency of existing infrastructure, being, having safe walking and biking, being located close to daily needs, and then variety of housing types. All of them got fairly positive feedback. People did not have to choose between these different strategies. They just were rating out of one through five what they thought about them. So next in the survey, we asked about outward growth and looking outside the urban service area at expansion areas and new areas that we might create new communities. And the most important strategy here was minimizing impacts to the environment. And the least important was access to major highways. I'll show you on this slide all five of the strategies that we asked about. And preservation of rural areas, having infrastructure in place, and compatible land uses all got more than four out of five stars on average. And really, access to the major highways was the only one that was below the four stars. So this input is part of what we're going to take and help shape the policy strategies that we are sharing in the next part of the presentation. But we didn't just rely on the surveys. We also have been having a series of public meetings, both virtual and in person, in different locations around the county. And we've heard similar themes in those meetings as well. A real emphasis on preserving natural and environmental spaces. A number of concerns about transportation, which I know will be of no surprise to any of you. Understanding that strategic density increases might need to occur, but that they needed to occur in places or in ways that considered the current neighborhood character. So as we've looked at that, what we've seen is that people seem to like the idea of redevelopment of some of our more older commercial areas or areas that are along major roadways where it might not be that attractive to still have single-family homes, but that within our established single-family neighborhoods, they really want to preserve that character. Certainly, we've heard about housing affordability. We've also heard about a need to emphasize safety in terms of walking, biking, driving. We heard from folks in the agricultural community that there's a lot of concern about all the traffic on our rural roadways and that they're not equipped necessarily to handle those volumes. We also had public meetings that were focused on the outward expansion and looking at what that might entail. And here, folks again emphasized the need to have infrastructure in place to support that new development. There was very much a sentiment that we needed to try to maximize what's already in the urban service area first and that, to the extent that we're able, under the constraints of state statute, the community definitely feels there need to be stronger developer regulations. Finally, there's been a lot of discussion about maintaining our important natural features, directing growth away from our more vulnerable coastal communities, and promoting a more sustainable development pattern overall. With that, I'll now move to turn it over to Melissa Leinhardt, who will walk us through the policy directions.
Thank you, Melissa. As Ms. Zornita stated, we are considering how to accommodate both inward and outward future growth. So for inward growth, next slide, please. How do we grow inside the urban service area efficiently? Besides the survey data that was just presented, this topic was also discussed in detail at our community meetings in both May and June. And then for outward growth, how and when do we expand outside of the urban service area? And we discussed this in detail at our community meetings in June, as well as the PAT meeting, the project advisory team meeting a few days ago this month. Next slide, please. So now let's talk about some inward growth strategies. The first topic we're going to talk about today is centers and connections. This topic has been presented to the board before at a previous workshop. And the intent of this topic is to streamline the Comprehensive Plan amendment process by allowing density and intensity bonuses within certain areas of unincorporated Hillsborough County, essentially directing growth to areas where it's desired and maintainable. Those bonuses would be tied to specific design provisions and required improvements as part of development, meaning there would be a public benefit if someone were to choose to use it. And choosing brings up the fact that it would be incentive-based as an approach, meaning that it would be an option for property owners, but not a requirement. Overall, this approach would be intended to incentivize growth in areas where the community wants to see it, that has existing infrastructure, and all the while maintaining the variety of housing choices that we currently have in unincorporated county today, which is urban, suburban, and also rural lifestyles. So what could these changes look like potentially? There are before and after pictures on the slide to provide some context. The first set of pictures at the top, it shows town and country, where Waters Avenue here, and you can see what a home would look like at a density of six dwelling units per acre on the left. And then on the right, you would see with a slight uptick in density, you could have slightly smaller lots with sidewalk improvements, for instance. The next set of pictures is the USF area on Fletcher. We currently allow 20 units an acre in this area of Fletcher Avenue, but with 30 units per acre, you could see a lot of improvements and potentially more connectivity. Finally, the last set of pictures is in Greater Palm River on 78th Street. What we see here is residential with nine units an acre on the left. And with just a few more units, we can have townhomes or duplexes to provide more options for housing types. And I'd also like to note that there are mixed use categories and that many of the community plans also support higher density. Additionally, the forthcoming map changes that you'll see on the next slide, notes that we're addressing areas that weren't as supported, that we, in the MetroQuest results, for example, in the survey, we saw some mixed reactions in Brandon and less support for some areas in South County. And I'll talk about that just in a minute. Next slide, please. This slide shows this proposed Centers and Connections map, which is also on the project website, on the Plan Hillsborough website. This map will change based on feedback from the community and the board. Blue circles are centers listed in community plans or major intersections where increased development could be achieved via this bonus, Centers and Connections. The blue lines are the proposed connections between those centers. And then the green circles are proposed centers in the coastal high hazard area, or the CHHA, or areas that are primarily lower in density. While the original methodology and the concept called for green centers in the CHHA and the areas primarily single-family with a focus on multimodal improvements, given the concern from the community in these areas and the current funding constraints, those centers on the map may be removed in future iterations. Some of them continue to be priority, to be priority locations or community focal points in the community plan. So I wanted to point that out. Next slide, please. The MetroQuest survey allowed the public to put a thumbs up, a thumbs down, or a neutral icon on the proposed Centers and Connections. And after analyzing those and the comments that were received in the mapping portion of the survey, staff noted significant support for the concept in the northern portion of unincorporated county within the urban service area, so especially in places like the University Area and East Lake Orient Park. The next version of the proposed map will incorporate edits that will take a closer look at the Brandon area, which again receives some mixed reactions. And then staff did hear some concerns and mixed reactions from South County folks. And we're considering revisions based on those comments. That being said, again, we are certainly welcoming your feedback today on the map and those comments. Next slide, please. The next section we're going to focus on is the topic of transit-oriented development. This concept focuses growth specifically around a fixed guideway transit route, such as bus rapid transit, streetcars, ferry stations. This often overlaps with our major corridors and centers. It encourages mobility options, affordable homes, and mixed-use development. Fowler Avenue continues to be studied as a possible facility enhancement that might utilize the proposed policy in the future. Overall, this idea is one that connects people to opportunities. It's also important to note that this is existing policy language in the future land use today, and it's being clarified and updated for purposes of this overall plan update. Next slide, please. This next slide is in reference to commercial locational criteria. If you think this sounds familiar, it's because Planning Commission staff has worked on this recently and with the aim of updating the language and improving it. Based on board direction that we received in January of this year, we are folding this concept and the modifications into this overall future land use update. The changes proposed before you on the screen are more limited in nature than originally proposed, and that's based on the board direction that we heard and also Senate Bill 250. Some major revisions that are being proposed as part of the CLC revisions. We're proposing to add a new future land use category, Neighborhood Mixed Use 6. This category would allow for an increase in density, but would not allow for consideration of more intensive uses like industrial. We saw this as something that was missing from the current list of future land use categories. We're also proposing to add the context classification map in as an evaluation of appropriate intersections for non-residential development. This map is currently adopted as part of the mobility section of the Comprehensive Plan. It's a map that marries both transportation and land use. Originally, it was proposed to replace the map that we use today, which is rather outdated. It's the 2040 Cost Affordable Map. But based on input that we received from the county attorney's office regarding the latest Senate Bill 250 language, we'll be keeping the Cost Affordable Map in the plan and adding the context classification map, which will allow for additional intersections to be considered for commercial. I'd also like to emphasize the word "consider." While we're openly, sorry, while we're opening up additional opportunities for commercial development, any rezoning applications would still be subject to the other policy direction in the plan, like compatibility and the community plan policy direction. Lastly, we are adding clarification language to the Commercial Locational Criteria section, ensuring that applications for commercial uses must consider community plan language. That's an understood in the plan today because the community plan language is adopted as its own element in the livable communities element. But we are adding clarifying language under the CLC that specifically calls out that information. Next slide, please. So from here, we're moving on to the outward growth opportunities. Next slide, please. For this slide, we're getting into... For this slide, we're getting into the agricultural policies that we have today. We currently have three objectives in the future land use element. No major changes are proposed to those. We continue to focus on the promotion and retention of agriculture. We did work with county staff, the county's Agricultural Economic Development Council, or AADC. We've spoken with the Farm Bureau and the Soil and Water Conservation District. And essentially, what we'll have presented to you in the future as part of a plan amendment cycle will be minor revisions to that language just to reflect the current programming. I am ready for the next slide. Thank you. The next item that it was part of our outward growth strategy is we're working on some utility extension policies. This specific update is intended to prevent septic tank clustering, as well as address any environmental issues that may exist in an area. This also allows water and sewer to be extended if a site is meeting very specific locational, environmental, parcel size criteria, or if a documented environmental hazard exists on site. We have coordinated with the Environmental Protection Commission and with county utilities on these policies. Next slide, please. So up until now, the expansion of the urban service area has only been through an applicant-driven request. We at the Planning Commission recognize the need for a proactive strategy for expansion that is publicly initiated. We've done some research, and we've seen some excellent examples of this with the Plant City Northeast Master Plan. We've seen examples in Sarasota County, Osceola, Indian River, Marion, Morgan Hill, California. They've all provided us with some excellent framework to draw from. We know that identifying where we should expand is a very complicated question. It will take a lot more time and consideration, coordination, public engagement. So today, we're looking at the criteria to consider for the future. Essentially, what we're trying to do is set up a framework and get that in place so that when an urban service area expansion is identified as needed, that we have the criteria in place to proactively address growth rather than reactively addressing it. Next slide, please. With this effort, we have asked three major questions. Before we can begin to look at the where, we have to consider the when, how, and what. So when is it time to consider expansion? How should we plan for that expansion? What should we look at in those expansion areas? We realize that planning for growth is very complex. It's going to take a variety of solutions. We've already talked about a number of ways to handle the growth inside the urban service area. So on the next few slides, we're going to go through each of these three questions and discuss the potential for growth outside the urban service area. And I know we've mentioned it before, but I'll say it one more time. This is really an opportunity for you all to provide input prior to reviewing draft language. So your comments and suggestions are very welcome today. We, as staff, want to ensure that we're on the right track here with these ideas and concepts. And that's why really we're here today, to present this information to you and elicit that feedback. Next slide, please. So this is the when slide. So when is it time to consider expansion? We will evaluate the timing according to the population projections. That will help us determine the amount of available developable and redevelopable land, and will ensure the availability of land for our homes, jobs, and daily needs. Next slide, please. How should we plan for that expansion? First, we'll develop a master plan that will help us to identify expansion areas. Within this, we will develop corridor plans that are specific to the goals of those master plans. Next, we'll engage with the community. We want to make sure that we've taken into account every aspect of the plan. We'll also continually review community plans. We'll coordinate with external agencies, review impact and mobility fees, and also encourage private infrastructure investment. Within this master plan, we'll also include elements specific to traffic circulation, network connectivity, utilities coordination, drainage, water, sewer, et cetera, preserving open spaces like parks and wildlife corridors. We'll also include a section for viable funding programs so we can make sure that those plans are financially implementable. Next slide, you were right. Thank you. Lastly, we'll look at what we should look at in the expansion areas. So at this point, what we're looking at are areas that are adjacent to the urban service area. These areas that have access to adequate infrastructure, either now or in planning within the Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP. Looking for areas that will optimize access to and delivery from public services. Ensure these areas will preserve open spaces, promote sustainability. Enhancing our community plans is important, so making sure that their vision and goals come first. These areas should also be within a half a mile to an employment or commercial economic center, or at least have the ability to create one. These areas would encourage economic growth, increase access to people's daily needs for goods and services. And these areas especially need to enhance safety throughout the entire community. As Melissa presented, you know, there was a a note about safety in the survey, an overarching sentiment that people wanted to feel safer. So in many of these areas, we have rural-scale roadways, established traffic patterns for travel. So if we're going to change the development pattern, we probably need to look at roadway enhancements that might be needed. And again, this is really tied back to the survey results and what people really want to see for safety measures. Next slide, please. So what is next for the future land use update? Next slide, please. Wrapping up the presentation, I wanted to show you a timeline for the future land use update. We're currently working on recommendations with additional outreach planned for the fall, coming to the Board of County Commissioners as part of the October cycle of plan amendments, with likely having public hearings in early 2024. Next slide, please. We will be having two more community meetings in November with an in-person and a virtual meeting option. All of our meeting details and past meeting videos and summaries are on our project page on our website. I also wanted to note that, again, with Senate Bill 250 not allowing more restrictive or burdensome language, we've had to delay sharing some drafts with the public as we have needed to consult with the county attorney's office to review that language. And we want to ensure that the draft language is meeting those requirements. But that being said, draft language should be on the website before the November community meetings. That is the schedule and plan. And maybe the most important is Slide 38, if you can go to the next slide. I'd like to mention that while Andrea, who could not be here today unfortunately, and I are the project managers for the future land use update, this has really been a team effort. I can't even, there are actually more people that should be on this slide, but they were, the thumbnails were getting very small. Andrew and I could not do this without all the important people on here. That being said, please feel free to ask any questions if you want to direct them to me. That would be great, and then I can find you the most qualified Planning Commission staff person on the call today who can answer the question. That being said, we're here for questions, comments.
All right, well, thank you for the thorough presentation and framework for for moving forward, and we'll go into board comments. Commissioner Wostel.
Thank you. Yep, I think that you, at the end there, you answered one of my questions. I just want to make sure, Ms. Ornita, maybe you can expand on this, but I felt like when the CLC and all that language came up and what could prevent confusion going forward, is there like a living, working document of the current language changes that you're making right now? Or is it just scattered throughout multiple desks?
We do have some drafts of the the different goals, objectives, and policies that we are circulating with county staff from various departments, as well as, as Ms. Leinhart mentioned, the county attorney's office. Because of Senate Bill 250 specifically, not only says we can't adopt anything more restrictive or prohibitive, we're also not allowed to propose anything more restrictive or prohibitive. So we want to make sure that we are scrubbing all of this language to make sure that it meets that letter of the law. I don't want to put the county in jeopardy in any way. And so that is why the the draft has not been, the drafts have not been released. They're they're still under review.
Are we, as elected officials, not excluded from at least seeing what the current frame of mind is? Because I'm just, I want to make sure that we're not going in a different direction than what everybody expected. We gave a lot of feedback when we were all newly elected. And so I guess if the county attorneys can get you guys an answer as well on if we can at least be allowed to go through, I mean, there were so many red lines, purple lines, and blue lines, if I remember, those were the three colors, maybe some green, I can't remember. But I just want to have ample time to review them and make sure we're heading in the right direction. That would be extremely helpful if the county attorneys can clarify that for you guys sometime before November.
Yeah, absolutely. We will, I will work with Johanna on that. And our intention is that the the draft would be released in October. There's another workshop with you all, I believe it's October 25th. On this same topic, you would have the strike through underlying in advance of that. And then we would not have any public hearings until after the first of the year. So there would continue to be opportunity for changes and feedback from you all.
Okay, and then, yeah, I guess my final comment would be that, yeah, from my point of view on that that blue heat map, it looked like the public it has, I don't know what suggestions you're going to take from the public. It looked like they pretty much covered it, though, all that stuff in Brandon, South County, and moved those. You know, I would, my position is that those need to move much closer to the city of Tampa line, that that really, that urban core. Make sure that we have language in there addressing any of these like RMU 35s and things like that, that those are all sucked into a much tighter loop so that way we can actually start building density that will allow these transportation densities that we need to operate more efficiently, so. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Melissa, for the presentation. Great job. And just some comments on the, I can really appreciate how folks want to maximize where existing infrastructure is, some development and infill. The unfortunate thing is that's just not what's happening with development. I mean, all you got to do is just watch last night's land use meeting, watch tonight's meeting. You'll see everything is going on vacant land. The goal is to throw up tons of big boxes with 500 windows in places where there's no road, no unimproved roads, no public safety, no jobs, and no public transportation. So I guess one of my big issues with expansion of the urban service area line, which I have kind of been for, I've said, actually, the time to do it was in the past. But, you know, now with some issues like live local and seeing how a lot of this development is taking place and getting approved by our board, it really does concern me, but when I I really take a look at it, you know, I think the land use designations are critical as as this urban service area line possibly moves. What are your suggestions on how we can, you know, control that situation as to actual land use designations moving forward? Because to me, that seems to be one of the critical components on the high multi-unit developers overstepping in my district particularly.
Sure, so I think the, any expansion of the urban service area, we certainly can look at differently than the current urban service area. We used to historically have an urban service area and an urban expansion area. Then growth progressed into the expansion area. But when we had that previously, there was a different set of policies related to how growth and development should occur in that expansion area. So similarly, we can look at having some different land use categories, perhaps ones that don't allow commercial in the residential and really more discreetly define where the uses should go. But all of that is part of why we're suggesting that we need to embark on this master planning process, for for lack of another term for it, for those areas so that we can very clearly understand the issues, the geographies, the needs from an infrastructure standpoint, and design this proactively in a way that protects the community from from things, things like this.
Yeah, I think that's really important and well said by you right there. I think that's, that's really important as we plan here for the future, that our land use designations do not cause the mess that we're currently in now, right now. So, because I really think we should have three service area lines. I've told you that in the past, that having this wall on the urban service area line, to me, is borderline archaic. When you, especially in my district where I have farms right on the urban service area line, there should always almost be a suburban service area line in between there with lower density. But also wanted to ask on, I see in the future, especially in East and South County, the big issues with water, sewer, and power, right? As we possibly expand the line or development keeps going, is there, is there a way for, you know, us to enter in with the development community, like public-private partnerships for for them to, if they're willing to help provide for some infrastructure, for us to do that with the development community so they assume some of those costs? Is that a possibility?
Absolutely, and I will apologize, they're doing some construction above my office, I think. So if you hear noise, I apologize. But absolutely, I think those types of public-private partnerships and other creative solutions are things that can be explored.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that that would be important too, because especially as these, I think some of the people and folks in the development community are willing to do that. So if we can take advantage of that, we should. Well, that's that's really all I have for now. Appreciate you guys taking the time on this report and all the hard work you put into it, so thank you.
Commissioner Cap.
Thank you. You have projections of 350,000 more people by 2045, that's correct?
Yes, yes.
And that's the whole county? Does that include the cities too, or are you just talking unincorporated?
And it's just unincorporated.
Oh, okay, so you, what are, do we have projections for the cities as well?
We do. I don't have those off the top of my head, but we'd be happy to provide them.
Okay, I always, I always have difficulty seeing this stuff in in the context of eliminating the city's impacts in all of this. So my, and about right, right now, something like the Energy Park just got freed up, which is a massive area. And I imagine that is is open to all kinds of development potential now and that there, it's going to be looked at. Do you know how many thousands of acres that is of essentially undeveloped land?
Melissa, I don't know if you recall the acreage of that property.
I'm sorry, it cut out for me. I didn't hear what property. What was it?
The Energy Park.
I believe that's around 1,000 acres, but let me check on that real quick.
Yeah, that, and I would just say that 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 has not really been freed up. It is still
I know, encumbered by that, but the way it allows and reads, I mean, I just, encumbered by what it has now, but of course, we know that that was just unencumbered from what it was before. And I don't know how much of that, I know that there's some undevelopable mosaic property within that, but I wonder, what did that, how many acres is that? I'd really like to understand, you know, that too.
Certainly. I think one of the things that we have to understand, not only is the gross acreage, but also the constraints and the, you know, environmental issues that might be on the property. So that that is what makes it somewhat complex and understanding exactly how much can be projected to go, go where. But we certainly can can get back with you with some additional information on on those parcels. I did want to add that we are projecting over 100,000 were residents. Um, I did want to add that, um, we are projecting over 100,000 more residents, um, with, and 250,000 more jobs within the city of Tampa. We're projecting that Plant City will, um, more than double in size. Um, so the, the growth is being shared across all of the jurisdictions, maybe not as much in Temple Terrace. Um, but they're, they're, they're more constrained. But, um, we, it, it is not as if, while the lion's share of the growth is yes, coming to the unincorporated area, we are expecting robust growth in Plant City in Tampa.
Right. And Plant City, of course, has expanded their boundaries and annexed a lot. We had discussions about this in the, in the past and how they annexed it also in a strange way with, you know, little holes within it. And, and that's what's the state legislature allows in these annexations, which, I mean, and that's why we kind of have Pebble Creek as county land isolated by itself. Um, and, you know, because those kinds of policies. Um, but when this was first done, uh, there was in the, uh, up until recently, we had traffic concurrency requirements that, um, were disbanded by the legislature as well, correct?
Yes. Uh, in 2011, the state legislature removed, um, uh, transportation concurrency and required that there be a proportionate fair share that a developer could pay to move forward on a project.
Right. Um, and well, in terms of that, but we're, we were using proportionate share, but we're not, are we now?
I believe now there are mobility fees that are, are covering that.
Right, right, right. Which I, I understand, but it's, I, I think it's a, from what I can ascertain, uh, a net loss in the development contribution around a portion of the land, um, or, you know, in a development. Um, I'm just, uh, you know, I'm really concerned about, um, having it clear for all of us, um, the fiscal impacts of making decisions to move the line. Because for instance, I don't understand why, um, I, I mean, people have certainly done more, uh, and the prior boards have allowed more intensity outside the urban service area for sure. I mean, that's what we have of all of RP2. And, um, and, you know, many, um, areas that around are, um, allowed a land use designation that's more intense. Um, the difference, and, and I think this needs to be explained and quantified and put out there. Um, the difference is, uh, whether the taxpayers, whether we all pay for that infrastructure expansion or the developer does. And I think that that, I mean, because somebody could put over the, uh, uh, well, there are already over the urban service line, much more intense development, but we as a county and all the taxpayers here didn't have to pay for that, um, specific increase in infrastructure as in, um, you know, as was defined as level of service. I just think it's very, I think it's very important that all of that gets laid out because I don't see any advantage at all in, um, moving the urban service line when you can do any density you want outside of it. But you don't get, have to pay the, um, cost of it, uh, totally the cost of it that you might have to pay if you move the line. So I, I don't understand why, um, we would necessarily want to do that.
And Commissioner, if I may, the energy industrial park area is just shy of 3,000 acres.
Yeah, I thought it was much more than a thousand. And, but we don't know how much of that is undevelopable, correct?
Um, I mean, not at this point, right now, the, the only allowable uses are very specifically tied to the energy production and that is just for, that is its own future land use category. So it's kind of in a, um, a class all by itself, given that it's just one geographical area.
And when I say undevelopable, I mean by, because it was a, a mosaic, uh, you know, restoration area that a certain amount of the acreage, I guess, can't be developed on because the condition of the soil or land for a century or so, or, um, so I just, I'd be really interested in finding out more about that. Um, and, um, I guess that's kind of, uh, where I am for now. But I think it's really important that we have an economic element to this so that we understand. Um, because we're always just given this without that impact. Um, and I, and that specific massive 3,000 acres, I'd like to understand as well. And I'll just say this, I, um, I, I visited Baldwin Park, um, in Orlando, um, to, to see, and it's, it's gotten all kinds of planning awards. And, you know, I know it was an empty piece of a former base, um, of 800 acres. They developed 200 acres there and most of it is just two-story. There are some bigger buildings. It's a great, great job. Um, and they have a, a industrial park. I guess that's part of it. Um, and it's got a lot of business, a lot of, um, jobs there. I assume, I don't have the whole story on it. Nobody took me and toured me through it. I was just kind of reckoning and figuring out some of this on my own. Um, as well as they do have an integrated, um, downtown commercial place with the CVS and the Publix and restaurants, uh, and that. And I looked at it, um, and the building part of it, the residential part of it, I understand is 200 acres and it might be less, but 200 acres. And they have 10,000 people living there. And I just thought it was interesting, um, and, and that wasn't, um, while it's dense, it's not tall. It's, um, for the most part, it's, um, as I said, two-story, uh, places, individual residents and that. So I, I was just looking at that for a density residential model that I, I found very interesting.
All right, Commissioner Cohen.
That, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, just, uh, three quick points. Um, the, the first is that I, I think that we should keep in mind when we're thinking about any expansion of the urban service area, that the I-4 corridor particularly is going to be a place that there's going to be growth in coming years with a lot of distribution centers and, and hubs, uh, popping up that are going to be receiving things that come in from the port and then make their way out into the interstate highway system to be distributed. And in order for those facilities to be built, in order for people to live near them and eat at restaurants near them and have facilities near them, there, there's going to have to be some kind of, of access to urban amenities and to water and, and stormwater and, and sanitary sewer, et cetera. So I think there's a real, I, I'm sure a real business case to be made for some area right around I-4. I, I guess it's up to, to you all to analyze what exactly that would look like and what the scope of that area would be. But I think that that's one that, that definitely needs to be looked at. Um, another thing is that Tampa Bay Water and the Hillsborough County Water Department are investing a huge amount of money over the next five years or so in pipelines and pump stations and various different enhancements to some of the points of connection that we already have. And my guess is that when you look at expanding those services, some areas are just going to be more, uh, cost effective than others to be added on to the current system based on where these investments are already being made. And I would hate to see us make our plans not taking that into account and not looking at that as, as something, um, to factor in. And then the third thing, uh, is that any, uh, additional density in the city of Tampa or in the currently urbanized area of the unincorporated county, a lot of it is in the coastal high hazard area. And if we are going to be serious about restricting at least high-density residential growth in the coastal high hazard area, that is going to remake the map a little bit and, and really dictate having to make some tougher choices, I think, in the areas that are on, on higher ground. So those are just my, uh, my couple of comments.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Willstall.
Yeah, just real quick, what Commissioner Owen said, I, I was surprised and pleased to hear that. Cause I've, I've debated, um, those actual points about should we have a urban, suburban and rural line? And I think that there should be some type of procedural kickers that say, hey, we've reached this X percentage, whatever it is, and now we need to reinitiate the expansion of the service area. So that way it's not this continued battle and debate. Um, so, and it would keep those really heavy density R16, whatever pluses. I know we've got a ton of them in that urban and then you could gradually taper down out into the suburban and rural areas. So that way there's less questions from both the development community and the people that already live there. So that was it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Kep, do you want to add anything else? I think she's left her hand up. Um, to no other conference of questions, if clerk can just, um, uh, count, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, I saw that she's in the meeting. Um, she wasn't here at the beginning, but if you can just register her as being present. And if nothing else, we're adjourned. See everyone tonight, six o'clock.
Thank you.
Thanks.